I went through again. And reflected feedback that I heard, thank you. I, at a high level, I would say that the addition of the management limitations was a significant add. The trying to clean up some areas that were disjointed was another place that I went. I will say that the formatting and numbers is not done. And at some point, I want to get the content right, and then we get a big announcement. Where I think there's still the places that get disconnected, and we don't have to do anything with it right now necessarily, is to make sure that anything that is currently listed as board policy on the website, that we have looked at it and identified its place, like where it belongs. Because this is a standard operating procedure document, right? This isn't board policy. And where I'm a little stuck is management limitations. In the past, I believe, Kim, have had the full force and effect of board policy, correct? And so there is a place here where it's going to be up to Oh, okay, it's going to be up to the attorneys to figure out what goes where. So if it's okay, I'm just going to kind of take you through what I think were some of the most significant things. So the purpose of the manual, I think there weren't any significant changes. However, if you look in the 1.0 Purpose of this Manual, and you look at the second paragraph, this language, the governance manual as approved by the board shall have the weight and authority of board policy. I don't actually, is that what we mean to say? I mean, this is our operating procedure manual, this is how we're supposed to behave with each other. Is, do we want to say it has the weight and authority of board policy? I know that sounds
I'm going to ask you that question, why wouldn't we? What's the harm in doing that? Like, what's the potential harm?
Every single thing, that means every single thing in here is, I don't know, it's the gospel, right? So this dictates administrative regulations, it dictates and cascades itself all the way down in the student handbook. And so I would say is if that's the way we want to treat it, then we have to make sure we're reading it with that in mind, right? As opposed to, this is a standard operating procedure manual that we adopt. You can still adopt it. I don't know, Kim, I don't, I sometimes always get words confused, but do you have a perspective on this? Like, so when you approved your board governance manual, what did you think that was? Was that board policy? Was that a SOP?
That was board policy. I don't, yeah, that was board policy and I think it spoke to fewer items than what this manual currently speaks to, but ultimately, it is kind of that umbrella that everything, that guiding, yeah, umbrella.
Yeah, I think that maybe the nuance of this is it's also got a lot of catchall, like how tos, right? With the addendums at the end, and so, you know, maybe that's where, and maybe it's, this is where maybe we'll just let the attorneys figure it out. If there's any reason not to say it's board policy as opposed to an SOP. Okay, so if you look at the page three, I guess it, the bottom, the, we had a fair amount of, we had some conversation about who owns this, and we talked about staff. The bottom paragraph is, I think, is really important for me to make sure that we are clearly articulating accountability, right? So the board will develop and maintain written governing policies that realistically address the broadest levels of organizational decisions and situations. So is how are we going to do that? One is our goals, right? So we're saying our goals is one way that we are making decisions. Our guardrails is the second. Our management limitations are the third. And our superintendent operational excellence expectations. It's kind of a mouthful, but this is basically saying, and everything else is kind of Dr. Roberts, that these are the, these are the things that we will look at and that we will quantify and hold Dr. Roberts accountable.
Is this operational excellence language wrong something?
It's, no, whatever you, it's that. So we, here's the thing, we can call it whatever you want, we just need to call it something.
That's just what that's for.
So can we decide on that right now? Do we want it?
We've got superintendent expectations.
So do we want to insert operational excellence or just keep it superintendent expectations? What do you guys want?
I'd just keep it superintendent expectations.
Okay, done. So I think this is kind of the, and these are like the guiding documents that we will use for accountabilities. So if you look at H4, nothing significant. Page five, nothing significant. I noticed that, I think somebody went in and changed the guardrails because they thought that they were edible. So with Rosie, I'll just make sure they're actually the guardrails that were passed. I think we already might have gone in and made a few changes. On page six, we basically just, you know, the superintendent is the CEO. This, I think, is, you know, it says, sole chief executive officer for managing school system operations shall be responsible for accomplishing any reasonable interpretation of the board's goals within the boundaries provided by the board's guardrails. And then I put board policy, the superintendent's job description, contract, annual evaluation framework, state incredible. And the first paragraph and second paragraph may not both be needed, but in essence, what we're saying is what's, what he can do, and that is all of the administrative policies and procedures and everything else. And it has the full force and majority as we decided by the board.
Jackie, in this paragraph, the one thing that kind of stuck with me was, and I don't know how you word it, and I don't know where you put it, but is there a place for what I feel like this leaves out in his job description, and for any future superintendent is what I'm thinking of. Dr. Roberts does a great job of collaborating with the board and looking to the board for collaborative thought leadership. And so in conjunction with the board, in consultation with the board, he has the right to do anything reasonable. I just feel like leaving it that a future superintendent could say, I really need to listen, I have my rules and I really need to listen to anything you guys say, I'm just going to run the district how I want to run the district.
Saying is back on page three, that the board's directive, for lack of a better term, to the superintendent is articulated through goals, guardrails, management limitations, and superintendent expectations.
Yep.
I would like feedback on that, like that's how, that's what he's held accountable to? He's not held accountable for thought leadership.
No.
I mean, that's not a written expectation.
It's like, it's like other duties as assigned. We all know that there are discussions that this board engages with and the superintendent that fall outside of our goals and guardrails. Specifically, and I, maybe it's not appropriate to put it in there, and that's fine, but that's just something that hung with me because for a future, for, it's not for
So I just have a question. If, if a superintendent is meeting our goals, is honoring our guardrails, but is not collaborating with the board on how to do that, will that matter to you?
Yes. You can be meeting goals and honoring guardrails, and a shift or some kind of significant change comes in a year or two years, and it's not addressed, it's not the goals and guardrails, you can change the goals and guardrails anytime you want, but by, I think it's just a nod to the fact that this has to be a relationship, it's not sole proprietor, and you go do your thing. And I think that's, this is, this is where we shouldn't, like, we shouldn't put it in, and that's fine, but this is where I got trouble with this governance, like the
But it's not even just SOFG, I mean, governance in general.
That's what I'm saying.
Government in general would say you got to have good things. And so I think that, what I would say is, I still think I'm not happy with these first two paragraphs. I feel like there was some contradictions, and this is on the title of page six. But I still don't think, Patrick, it is addressing your issue. Now, if there are certain, like, for instance, if you look at management limitations, we are being very specific about things that we expect to be engaged in, right? So labor relations was one, I mean, there's, and so if there are things that require some type of collaborative dialogue, and we haven't called it out, I guess one place we could do it would be in a management limitation. Like, we have one around, we have something around budget, we have something around personnel. So we have a couple of things where, I just, I don't know how else to word.
Well, I'm just trying to get to how, what are we trying to protect? Because when we set our goals, we set them in collaboration with the superintendent. Likewise, the interim goals, guardrails the same. I'm, I'm just trying to better understand what I'm saying more plainly.
This board, this district, got off the rails in a previous, in a previous management because the superintendent was given this broad interpretation of what's reasonable instead of having a tighter definition of what's reasonable, and I feel like that has, as we, you know, I think there are some consequences to that that can echo through time. And I feel like that hurts kids.
I feel like in the past two years, maybe three years, what we have put in place is a pretty tight infrastructure of expectations. So I don't, I think this is not, but I don't think, this, if this has the full effect of either how the board operates or that this board policy, it would seem like it would be harder to get out of that behavior without a discussion.
With this board, it would, with this superintendent, it would?
I hear what Patrick's saying. I, I think, I do agree, Jackie, I think the last, at least approximately two years I've been here, I think there are things in place, like the monitoring, conversations that allow for that. Obviously, to Patrick's point, I think the thought leadership was nice to have, but I don't know if it's necessary. I also don't want to place an expectation on board members because there's no requirement. There will be a thought leader to be a board proprietor, that's true. And to make the assumption that we would even be able to offer thought leadership, not like this board, because I think we're fortunate to have a fairly diverse lived experience of board members, but, yeah, I wouldn't want that to be so formal considering everybody can't offer that thought leadership on certain
It's the phrase reasonable interpretation that maybe is what I hit on. Yeah. And what else are you going to put in there? Because legally, I think that's the best you can do is to say it has to be a reasonable interpretation. But what I think is reasonable interpretation, when you think is, there can be a wide gap.
Our interests are reasonable interpretation. I mean, you think about it.
We get to approve those.
No, we don't, we don't.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
We give feedback. So here, here's what I would suggest is, I'm going to look at these two paragraphs because I actually think this should be in one paragraph, and somehow I need to rework the words, but I, unless there's, I, I hear what Patrick's saying, but I also think what we're, what we should be saying is, look, if we're, if we're saying in goals, guardrails, management limitations, and superintendent evaluation, this is what we expect of you, he's got to know that the rest of the stuff is, is
Fair enough, okay.
Any other thoughts on this?
And I'm happy to help you with this, Jackie. I think we're wanting responsible for accomplishing, we want him to, we want superintendent to accomplish the goals, not in interpretation of the board's. I don't know if that, I don't know if it's worded correctly.
The second one, I think, might have come from, let's, you might take it offline.
Yeah.
Right, you write this section.
Yeah.
And then we can have
I think using a reasonable interpretation on the strategy towards achieving the goals, is that, is that the answer I'm saying?
Yeah, it's like, remember reasonable interpretation might just work.
Yeah.
By itself, so like, Patrick has some concern with it. And now that I'm looking, I'm like, yeah, it is, but he's responsible, superintendent's responsible for accomplishing the goals.
There you go.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Okay, so I just put Kim for this one, so I know who to come back to. So the next section, policy review and compliance. I am going to, right now, recommend that we do not engage because this is a conversation that Josie, that Miriam, and Dr. Roberts. What I will say is that if you look at the bottom of page six, this is the main point. The superintendent is responsible for developing a process to ensure administrative regulations, major division operating manuals, handbooks, student handbooks are reviewed alongside board policies on a regular basis. And that is his printed manual for you. Look at you, oh my gosh, Rosie, thank you.
You're awesome.
One of the categories has to be print expenses. I'm here right now in the day is.
No, this is honestly, to Rosie's credit, there is no way to print all board policies. She has been copying and to actually get this, because this is actually what is our board policy. And so thank you.
So copy these from them, wasn't it?
Thanks again. So that's got to be a lot of time. So, so I think just on policy review and compliance, the question, and this is where I think we do not want to be in in other districts, there is board policy, right? So let's think of an IASB board policy, and it, you know, let's just pick, let's pick one that we know is like legal basis for board action, legal references Iowa code, right? So an example of board policy could be something that is written in Iowa code that the board has to approve because that's what DNPS needs to exist. I think as a, as a rule, we should think about board policy as recommended or necessary from the state as something that goes on consent. And when, if needed, something is pulled from consent to discuss. But a lot of these board policies are they're law, they don't, they shouldn't warrant us to talk through, like, for instance, there's 84 board policies waiting for us to review. Okay, and that is, is, I think probably not the best use of our time. Other districts do it. And I think the discernment process that we have to figure out is, what should the board actually be looking at within that board policy? If there's a, let's say there was a new board policy around something more, more controversial or around reporting requirements or around
I think the cell phone, cellphone is a perfect example where the state is requiring
Now they're, yeah.
Right, there's state code that says districts have to, you know, put a policy in place to do A, B, and C regarding cell phones. There's so much interpretation that the district has to do in order to write that policy and put it into place. So, and oftentimes, Iowa code is written with that level of interpretation. And so it's, you know, what is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of may versus shall statements. And then the district has to interpret what they, those mayes are.
Yeah.
So really, it comes down to our interpretations of the Iowa code and putting that into place. And what is it that the board wants to be involved in versus taking the superintendent's recommendation? And I'm going to offer, again, if it aligns with, with the goals, the guardrails, the management limitations, and the expectations that we've set forward, I would honor that, because we will be monitoring. But that, you guys know that that's my, but
Yeah, I think, how about for this one, I almost feel like this might be the, to get this done, I want the board to have one conversation with Josie and with Miriam, and I think, let's see what they recommend. I think in general, the point is that we don't find ourselves at a lot of other school districts where they're literally meeting board policy, discussing it, having long conversations about it because that is not necessarily a place that's necessary for us as opposed to maybe there are, there's some standard for what is reviewed and discussed by the board
Yep.
that we try and come up with what the standard is.
Possibly we think that we might have that conversation.
I'm trying to get this done before November 5th. And so ideally, if we can keep this moving forward, if they're available in two weeks, we would have that conversation. So I think it's further complicated by the fact that they're still unpacking what they were handed, which is it's a lot, but I think Miriam will be able to provide very good guidance on this. So we're going to just skip this policy review, because I think at the end of the day, what we want to know as a board is that a policy is being reviewed on a regular basis and that it is all aligned, including student handling, so there's also consistency across the things, we're complying, yes, and that we're alive, yes. Okay, page eight, so page eight, I I went back and looked at the management limitations. And most of these are cut and paste from management limitations. So management limitations, as the way I understand them, are directives, basically, that are very specific in what the superintendent shall not fail to do. So A is one that I think, I'm just going to say we're going to come back to, but this is the one about regulations, manuals, and handbooks. B is the employee protection and labor relations. So this does require everybody to read it again, I'm going to have Josie read it again also, but word for word, what was in the last one. You will see that it's broader than just, it includes retaliation statement, it includes a complaint appeals process, it includes the personnel manual, and then it includes the employee bargaining reps over a non mandatory but permissible. So I, I have open questions right now, but I also want to be clear that this was a cut and paste from the way it was in the past. Do people have questions on this one? Like, for instance, what is not written on this one is under employee protections and labor relations. Nowhere did we put in writing that the board's expectation is that the superintendent checks in with the board trying to enter into negotiations. And where that would go, I don't know, but that is something I think we all said we valued, was the opportunity to have that conversation with the superintendent prior to entering into negotiations, or that also had a financial impact for decision-making. So is that the type of thing that might go in management limitations? The expectation of a meeting and a conference or a conference consultation with the board?
Sure. Don't let enter into contract negotiations without consulting.
That's, don't let them miss. I mean, because if the goal is that, that if the goal is to make sure that the board and superintendent are in sync prior to negotiations, it's, it's a conversation prior to negotiations. I don't know. The retaliation, this is where I need Josie to read, or Kim, you may remember why maybe one and two are there as opposed to just in a staff, staff handbook?
That existed prior to my time.
Okay.
On the board, I'm happy to ask the individual that or board members that were in place during that timeframe and get clarity.
I don't think we need to, I mean, I think this is a question for Josie, really, about, like, is, are their retaliation protected? I mean, that's really, it's
So we've heard, we've, we as a board have heard that employees have not been comfortable sharing feedback due to this potential happenstance.
Correct, but do you think it's, it's not in the handbook somewhere, or if this is us underlying it?
It seems like it will be on handbook.
Yeah.
And versus a management limitation.
Although if it's, if it's the board telling the superintendent, then it would have to be here around that too. Because then it cascades down.
And that's the key is, your building may have a procedure that, or a handbook that would include a non retaliation, but that doesn't stop somebody at the district office from retaliating.
So the second one prevents that from appealing a complaint to the board. But all internal complaint. I'll check with Josie on this one, I mean, I think that it's fine to keep it if it's necessary. The first part. With all internal complaint procedures that have been exhausted. I think that is something that an employee already has the ability to come to the board. So maybe it's seeming inconsistent.
I mean, there's a formalized process.
Correct.
By Iowa code.
That's what I'm trying to say.
I don't know if this is appealing a complaint, I think, is the question for me, is is this a appealing a complaint regarding the individual personnel? Yeah, is, what is the intent behind this? Is it, is it a complaint against me as an individual employee? Is it a complaint? Yeah, I, I don't know the implication on that one.
I think, anyway, I mean, it may not be necessary. Yeah, I mean, as long as it's documented somewhere, I think, and so then three is kind of goes with this, four is about a personnel manual, again, whether or not that needs to be in here as relates to collective bargaining. And five, so does anybody have any red flags? There's still work to do on this, but I feel like this is what we said was important to bring back. And so what I've taken away from this is the addition of something about the superintendent discussing strategy prior to labor negotiations.
Negotiations.
Yeah.
So C is where I definitely need, C, D, so the, there's, I got this from a combination of places. One was our conversation about the financial health of the district. And one of the requests was quarterly summaries of the financial condition of the district. That is, I'm assuming, just our year-to-date actual, budget to actuals. And I Um, and I I don't think those are currently. Received, typically they're months late anyways, but I I think that the question for this group is whether or not that is actually going to. Say something that is important, is that going to tell us something that is important? Um, this quarterly summaries of the financial condition of the district, or is it just an obligation that the board sees this, so there's transparency? In knowing the financial public of the district.
Can you make it a can you make it a more vague statement where it's a superintendent's responsible for a. A relevant quarterly report of the district's budget status? Other than making it a specific thing? Because I agree with you, Jackie, and like you, we could get a report then that doesn't mean.
I think you have to figure out what is it you're really trying to know. I think to me, you have a budget, the budget's approved. The question is, is it relevant to know when there has been significant overspending? Is it relevant to know if there is an unanticipated expenditure like I? So I think it's fine to put things in here, but I guess the question is, what is it that you're really looking for? And I I don't. I I think a fair question is if if there is in um. What is the notification? If I said, what is the notification process if we have significant impacts for financial? What is there a process in place for that?
Is there a is this a question for either I A S B or a national group to say what's what do other districts do? Uh, what notification do they get? Because I get what you're saying. It could either be a or twenty percent over budget. Uh, in this area, or it could be here's quarterly report for your budget, even though those two are. Might answer the question to what looking to more give us some visibility, but I just I feel.
I will ask for feedback. I think it is important in this section for us to think about like, what is the thing that we really want to know? Uh, so let me jump through a couple. So this was kind of in part of it was this came up in our um. Retreat also, and part of it was I A S B recommendations. So like, if you look at D. I A S B recommendations were, you know, a ratio around solvency, a ratio around spending ratio. Um, but but this is a great one that we haven't had, and I think we talked about, which is projections of revenue and expenses. That is a pretty significant one that I think we focused has not been shared on a regular basis. But I'm just not sure of other of C one. And so that's a question that I can ask I A S B. Um, do people have?
The examples that you're providing, um. With regards to, you know, how do we get informed if we have, you know, these sorts of things happen? I just think that they are. Like, if those things are happening, there's a lot of a lot of steps that led up to that, that that the superintendent. I feel would not be doing their proper oversight of the CFO to get us to that point. And so.
I I think the question is, is there. That if there is a significant financial issue. That the board is. I mean, that's, I mean, it's very theoretical, right?
Sample, we were presented with a um that goes to goals and guarantees. We were presented with an overspend for one area and was told that that was the reason that. Several campus and academy had to cut a million and a half dollars. That is not, that is not aligned with our goals and guarantees. And then this area over here overspent so much. That it impacted a bowling guard rail is absolutely relevant to this board. And so I think in in that kind of case, I like, I see where you're going with this, but in that kind of case. It impacts our decision making like goals and guard reps. And so if we're going to go back to that, um.
And I guess under our current practices. That's the X, I mean, our current expectations is that that is shared with us in our budget presentation.
And we wouldn't have an ongoing knowledge of that. I mean, the the preventative here is that we we heard about it in March. You know, as we're trying to pass a budget instead of hearing about it in. Uh, it may have been known to be in July.
So how about this? Why don't I try and get some recommendations from I A S B and C and B? I think what I've in general sense is as close to real time as possible. If there is a significant, I don't know how you define significant financial issue that the board is humanizing. And I mean, that's really, I think, ultimately.
I with with the realistic expectation, Jackie, that we understand that reporting financials in real time can sometimes. Be confusing because there are delays based off of when funding strings come in. I like, I get that. I get that that that's a that can be a that could be confusing to the public. But.
I'm just trying to yeah, understand what, so if we were notified, what would we that do?
I think the question is if there's a choice that had to be made. So let's just say Title One gets cut a year. By fifteen percent. Is is the board obligated to be notified? What is the board? I I think I I can't think of any real examples. I think it's more just about communication flow, and I don't know where the threshold is for notification. And so why don't I do some research on that, that people can look at it, see how it feels?
Yeah.
Okay, the the two that I really need help on, um, so. Number two, I believe, is really just about following, which I think is Iowa law.
Yes.
Which is competitive. Voting.
Yes.
In a bit, I mean.
Yes.
That's Iowa law, isn't it?
So I'm C two.
So C two and C three. So C two is that you have to have um. They have failed to implement proven competitive voting procedures for all projects and amount that meets or exceeds the competitive vote thresholds. So that I think is just law, which I don't know if we have to have it in because it's it's the law. Um, in unless. We think we need to state it.
That's part of my question is, if it's law, do we inherit, but also. The responsibilities that are directly supporting this, doesn't that follow their responsibility of the C or the all of our facilities, director?
I think it's it's the superintendent is ultimately responsible. So like, just like the one before where it talks about collective bargaining. HR has significant role in that, but ultimately it's superintendent.
I mean, so I'm not seeing stuff in here around like teaching and learning, like none of Dr. Longbeath's.
Because we have the board, it's these are things that the board has called out as wanting to specifically. Codify it some way. If there is something in teaching and learning. This is where it would be potentially, if it's not in goals, targets. So that's how this came to be. It was a, I mean, I don't know what it was, Ken, when, I mean, I think there were. A lot of management limitations for Dr. Roberts. I think the goal should be as few as possible for this. But I think to answer your question, Scott, that's why, yeah, there were twenty two.
I would I would rather see that whatever the contractual relate SOP is between the superintendent and. His executive team versus us monks or indoor groupie like that.
I do think, though, so that's you're talking about C two. I think C three. The question I have for C three is whether or not how the hundred thousand dollar threshold came to be, whether or not. That's a the board set that number or. And if anybody knows your break, if not, that's the question I have to ask. Because.
Is a board set number.
So I don't. So do people have feelings on that?
I think it's appropriate to have this in there to say, you know, again, it's.
At the set, so we're setting the number at a hundred thousand. And I mean, I guess what I probably wanted to is a little research, like, is that I don't know what that hundred thousand dollar number is in the context of anything.
Right.
So.
Other board examples.
No, they do, but I think it's about the threshold, a hundred thousand, right threshold.
Yep.
So number four, fail to implement prudent competitive procedures, including but not limited to R and P's. This again seems like law.
Right, it's chapter twenty six.
So so I don't know that we have to state it. Why are you looking at that? I guess.
Well, we that like. How would we know? If it's not happening?
How will they know? We would receive. I mean, ultimately, by us adding these in. To this manual, the expectation is is that we would receive an annual report. Just like goals, we have our monitoring reports, guardrails, we have our monitoring reports. This is going to require a level of monitoring on the board's behalf. Um, and we are going to have to determine what that looks like because the report, when we have management limitations in the past, the reports were. In many pages long, they were not consumable. It was hard to decipher what was and wasn't happening. So. I mean, if we put it in here, it's saying that it's important enough for us to monitor that it's happening or not happening, and what information do we want? To show that.
And I think the question is, is there, you always ask this question, is there a reason?
Yeah.
That would cause us to feel like it's not happening or happened, right? So.
Yeah.
You know, it's it's.
So would an annual audit be like on an annual report be a better um? Thing to put in there then, so that once a year we have that, yes, someone has checked and we are. Ex if we're we're executing a competitive bidding process, we are following the law. I I don't, do we already have that in place? In our financials?
Yeah.
Our financials may state that at the beginning, in that in that in that huge book that we get, I think they say we audited this and we. We say that you are doing the things that you're supposed to do.
Like, are they are they saying they do competitive bidding? Like, I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah, so maybe maybe it could just be included in something that already exists.
And I will say that there there were previous policies that existed that were. Written and approved that spoke to specific concerns that existed at the time. So.
Some some others are still here in this. Um, I I would like to maybe get rid of some of this, but we're keeping everything right now. Um, just out of fear that what if something happens?
No, I think that's what we're trying to, right?
But we haven't gotten rid of anything yet. So the direction would be where can we cut? And put these things that are legit concerns into something that already exists or get a verification and annual verification. Uh, where it already exists.
So for instance, I'm just going to say for C, financial stewardship. If C, sorry, C, let's see, C two and three and four. If some type of financial audit on an annual basis is done in this district that verifies that there's competitive bidding. I don't think we have to do anything. It shouldn't be here.
Right, right.
Because the verification is done through an annual, right?
Yep.
So I unless we have a history of not doing this, which I don't think we do. We don't know, right? So but but and again, lift, everything's a problem.
Right, right.
All right, because so this is where I really want to go. This is where there's a lot of energy at the retreat was around. The obligation um of the district's contracts or expenditures greater than a hundred. In our conversation, people suggested that this actually he had zero. That the board review. Everything. And that the conversation was a scaffold that approached that was like a kind of a three year. Stair step to bring some.
Yeah.
Control, focus, understanding, and I, there's probably a meat in the middle would be my guess, I think. That's a that's a seismic check to move to.
You've done this, I haven't. Sitting at that meeting, the expectation would be that the chair would see expenditures over and any board member could look. But then that that would be handled at uh the the agenda planning meeting and put on consent.
I mean.
Or that would test that the board could then vote on an extended.
I think there's there's a period of emissions, right? So right now. I believe that I'm going to ask for a C that our threshold for approval. Hundred thousand. So we don't see some things that are under a hundred thousand. So if there is a desire to see things under a hundred thousand, which I think there is from the board. Then how low are we going? Are we saying we want to see everything, right? And and to be clear. That just means it's on consent. That does not mean that, right? That this is a uh, but no, a board chair of like, it's all a nothing, right? You don't want this to be the responsibility of board leadership. So I think the, I think. If this is what I'd say, if there's energy around a desire to um. Reduce the hundred thousand dollar number to a lower number. Then maybe that's a conversation we have with Dr. Roberts and Shashank about what feels possible. So for instance, I don't know if. What more you're responsible to, like, they may have a certain dollar figure threshold. Everybody may have different.
Yeah.
And so I I think though, again, part part of um. Going back to the why, right? So kind of what is what is the goal of this? And 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 look, there. This can be one that I think was elevated by some people around, like. Does the board really understand how some of the commitments dollars is being paid? That's that's where the impetus was around this. So I. I'm I'm looking for feedback on this. I can ask Dr. Roberts and Shashank what they think might be some. Recommendations that would not um. Stop the board, stop the ability of the district to function, right? Because, I mean.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't want everybody waiting on the board every two weeks.
Right, order.
So.
They lost probably John at that time, so maybe it wasn't like as familiar with that conversation. What's the impetus behind? Is this a problem currently? Or why why would the lower just?
Most districts, well, a lot of districts review everything.
They're much smaller.
Speed around, like, I think there are larger districts that approve everything. I'm not saying that's what you should do. Uh, I think when we did a survey and I sent it out to people and I have it anymore, uh, right, I have it in my email. I think hundred thousand was the the high end. Uh, fifty thousand was where more boards seem to be in terms of what they approved. I think the other consideration is actually transparency.
Yeah.
So it was not just um a um that there's an issue as much as it's transparency and how. Dollars are being spent. Because right now, it gets a hundred thousand dollars. Or less, it is not something of come on the board to chat actually.
Right, okay. I I I can start again behind the transparency part. I'm just like, still in the essence of trying to. Minimize this list of things. Is this a want to know or a need to know? For me, it's purely just a want. There there's, if there hasn't been an issue with it, so I'm thinking now even a hundred thousand dollar things that we're seeing. Nothing has come out of that. Like, there's there's not been, I guess there was the one situation with um the comms firm. That situation, but I'm of all the other consent agenda items that have had. Those expenses over a hundred thousand, no action has happened out of it. So I'm wondering by adding more on there, what are we expecting to be different? Well, I my concern would be, and maybe this is a way to do it, maybe this was kind of spoke maybe a little bit. Is it one time expenditures of a hundred thousand dollars or ongoing expenditures to the same vendor that add up to more than a hundred thousand? Idea here is I go spend twenty thousand at a time. Every consent agenda and spending a million dollars by the end of the year, and it's under the board threshold for ever having to help anybody or be transparenter. And if, and so I think. There's some, there may be something there where it's it is a planned ongoing expense from the district that adds up to a fiscal year of more than a hundred thousand dollars. I want to see it, because a hundred thousand is what we. Yeah, because a hundred thousand is what we're doing that one-time spent, right?
So let's, let me um. Let me get to be a little bit of a student on what, so what I is feeling has, and then we can discuss it, I think there's. There's a transparency argument, there is a um. This idea of like a small, and when does it add up past a hundred?
I think it's language around aggregate, does need to be averaged.
Okay.
I do.
So if if it in aggregate, it aggregates past.
Hundred thousand in a fiscal year. That feels like the same standard.
When, when is that coming to us, though?
When?
On a consent.
Well, I get that, but if I'm spending, if. Let's just say we're implementing the LEAF framework and I'm spending twenty thousand dollars on this professional development. Today, and it's not an ongoing contract, but. By the end of the year, perhaps I will continue to invest because we determine to be more, or whatever the case may be.
Let me give you the example, lean training out of Colorado costs twenty five thousand dollars per time. And we're gonna go ten times. And we know we're going ten times because as partners.
Well, you know that, sure, but.
But we're not spending it all at once, and so you don't have to come to the board, but. You know, and you are planning on in a budget to to do that, it should come to us.
I think this to be, and then we, I need to buy, because I really wanted, and then we got our stop at ninety. Um. Part of this is also transparency about funding source.
Yeah.
And that's actually not written here, because that was one of the things that was a discussion, which is regardless of what threshold. If it's a hundred thousand, what's the funding source, so it was title dollars, it said.
Yes, seven hundred fifty thousand, seventy, seven hundred fifty thousand, that's a way, where did it go?
Can't this just be in embedded into our budget conversations then versus it? I, I, versus it coming to us. Every agenda, and. One of my concerns is the lift that this is going to take for personnel. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it because it's more work, I think that if it's truly something that is going to be. Valuable information. And it's going to impact the way in which we take action by all means. But this will will increase the lift. That's exponentially, um.
System.
Not getting, well, that was.
Well, I'm just gonna say, will it, because now you could automate this, you can you can run a report.
So. On this point, okay, what I think I'm hearing, just to for for C. So um. One highlight is, if there is some policy that relates to superintendent having to notify us that there's a significant. Departure from the budget. In some way, that might be something that needs to be put in writing. The competitive quoting procedures and things like that, that's law, that's not necessary to be stated.
Right.
And then the discussion is. The obligation of the district, that is definitely something we have to put in there, we have to decide in the financial. Okay. The D budget parameters. We should talk about um and whether or not. We put these numbers in. Or we, you decide even in the course of this year, we're evenizing the solvency and upset spending ratio. But this is um. Ten to fifteen, I think is. We can, we can talk about that at another time, I think we have to discuss the numbers, maybe that's something we do with Shashank.
Yes.
So he can make a recommendation on where is a floor where we want to keep those two numbers. I do think it's helpful, I've got a board policy, I don't know, Kim, but you feel about it, but I feel like. That's catalyzed from a bunch of conversations is. Is around these two two numbers.
I agree, I just don't know that it's gonna be realistic anymore.
What are you doing?
With our.
Current situation.
Where we're headed.
Um, or maybe it's transparency, there could also could just be transparency around.
Yeah.
And discussion about.
Which were there for that one? Yeah. I agree with you, and I think this number needs to be reviewed, I'm. Uh.
So annual review or annual discussion.
But uh, some sort of a safety so that we don't go to the piggy bank too many times, where it's like, well, I like this one, great, you know? Like, you don't fall with a load tank.
Okay, and then that should be under, like, when we do the. Like the quarterly or whatever. Budget that we're talking about, several lines on. Just be that amount.
I mean, so here's, when I think about this number. This number to me fits at the moment when you are. Looking at the high-level projections, right, and Shashank says we've gotta cut. Fourteen million, and you kind of look and weigh and figure out, well, if we cut. We dig into over here, then we'll be at this solvency, like, to me, it feels like it's a conversation that sets a framework for the.
Yeah.
Budgeting rate of this, ten to eighty.
We gave, we authorized Shashank to go below. The solvency ratio in the last budget cycle, so that we didn't have to cut that fourteen. Million dollars this, so. Um. If I happen at the beginning of the cycle, to say. We're authorizing to. Dive into that.
Yeah. And the expectation is that throughout the year. That he stays within those budget, reason two.
So that just in case an emergency happened, you have to catch up, I mean, so. Yeah.
So E, leadership continuity succession. This is uh law, and yet it always has seemed to be an issue.
Yeah.
So it's worth writing it, and um, so it gets done on an annual basis.
Yeah.
And uh, and you'll notice it's. This is the IASB recommendation, which is it's not just superintendent succession plan. It's the thing, I don't know if I used the executive. Senior cabinet, so I have to, what is the term we're using?
Executive.
Executive cabinet.
Executive cabinet.
And this will be for executive cabinet, for succession.
Yes.
Okay. Um. Board agenda and consent, so. This, number one, is moving us beyond. Right now, all the board sees are two seventy nines. And the request is to see every. Personnel action. And um. And so it's, it's a broader set of information that's being requested, and. Then it also. Request funding source. Now, the funding source, I think, is the question for Josie, because. That sounds easy in nature. But I think a lot of these positions are blended, you know, um. The only thing that I was trying to think of was whether it's grant-funded, because that is where we have found ourselves in situations. And I don't know if we just specifically state that positions are.
Limited versus temporary.
Yeah, I mean, federal dollars, state dollars, those are technically.
Dangerous, I guess.
I would like to see if it's grant-funded, I mean, I don't even know if it's in general fund or a couple or whatever those other. Faces are, but I do think grant-funded.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a story we're into, like, uh.
Yeah.
CS, yes, and for example, I thought that we have. Not.
No, we we, he. There was enough of an upward.
Yeah, I remember.
I remember them going back and saying, yes.
I know, um. It didn't happen.
Worked.
Right.
So I'm super clear on that. It's my nice, my greatest work, though, okay. Um. So what you'll notice is, these are the only management limitations, so. This, this was. These were things that were called out. Um, as issues, I think our goal is to. Hmm. Cut out as many of these as possible. So, and I think, honestly, I think there there's an opportunity to do that. With a little bit of work. So then if I'm just kind of paging through. To some of the other pages.
Before you go um, move on from F, you discussed F one, but not F two.
Uh, who is that?
Contracts.
Oh, okay, see, this is, thank you, that's, that should be actually, that's, that is the thing I need to hold on. C five. Versus F two. These are the same thing, yeah. And, and I think. This was the question I had, which is all contracts and contract windows will be placed on the board to check that. Regardless of the amount, so.
So personnel contracts or just any contract that over.
And this is any contract, so it really should. This is really the conversation we had for. C five. And I think. Where we landed is that we come back. With some recommendations.
The same thing, you don't wanna see, you know, you don't wanna have it gum up the system by. Showing us all this stuff, but I think it's important, like, I heard anecdotally a couple of, where it's like. The Patrick's don't come open.
Yeah, well, that's different, that's a, that's a. If you're, that's a competitive bidding issue, that's not anything that we're attempting to address. In this process.
Things that are being said that I don't understand.
So page twelve. It just kind of pings up that there is a board orientation. Board training. Board information requests. Um. I wanted to check something on board information requests. If, let's just say I request information and the superintendent says. He's gonna decline it because it takes too much time. If, if the board, if a majority of the board agrees. Then. Dr. Roberts would have to comply, I just wanna make sure it's a majority. Of the board, I think him, it said. I saw it written two different ways, but it should be a majority, because it needs to be.
Yeah, I think it says needs to.
Yes. Majority. Yes, yeah, okay, um.
But I think it's okay for Doc, for the superintendent to come back to us and say. This is going to take us this. This number of man-hours, and it's going to require us to shift our focus.
Yes.
Away from.
Yes.
Goals and guardrails to do this, I think that's an appropriate conversation to have.
So decline request can be elevated for full board consideration, yeah. He. I don't know if I need to say it, is, is it implied that he can? Talk about that, or do I need to skip that? Superintendent.
I think that's implicit in board action, is that there would be this guy.
Um. Okay, I wanna. Call out a couple of things, and I really need to get a volunteer, so. On page thirteen, superintendent evaluation. Kim, I'd like for you to read this because it's a, it talks about the monitoring process. And I just, I want you to take a look at that. Um. Board evaluation committee, evaluation cadence, superintendent contracts, superintendent comp, discuss these things, so it's just a matter of reading them. Um, superintendent PD, does the board want to see? A link? Does the board want to see a plan at the beginning of the year, or a report at the end of the year, or just that he? Provides updates?
Three hundred.
Sorry, on page fifteen.
Page fifteen now.
Seven point six.
We're going the budget, I think it's easy for it to see. Bit before we pass a budget.
This is so, this is individual supervision.
This is just individual.
What we pay, right? I think there's two different things, there's the, there's the PD, like the. The individual training and coaching, like the tarot, then there's the PD, like the travel. The conferences of them, things like that, I think.
So. Okay, so the PD plan, that is like more of the tarot, three sixty, is that something that you? Is it, is this mutually agreed upon professional development goals beginning with the year, or is this at the end of the year reflecting on the PD that's been done? A prescriptive?
I think it depends on like, as the page says. The um, financial. If it's. I would like to see if these were the ones. And not be surprised if there's a little margin.
And what I'm hearing, though, is that we typically have not. Set approved. A superintendent travel budget. It's not historically ever done. Or is there a suggestion that could?
Can we have a discussion about it, and the only reason I would bring it up is, it is not that I don't trust his judgment in professional development, it's not that I don't want him to have professional development, it is. The over and over and over again, thousand times, the optics of travel are always the worst part, especially at the executive level, and I think that just. We just need to be aware of it, so I'd be, I would love to have a conversation to come to some sort of mutual agreement that, where we're not. Limiting Dr. Roberts' professional development while still understanding the realities of the optics of some of those terms.
So I have need to maybe report, and you.
Yes, right. He has them, he has them, so we actually added this to the, to the, to the value, which I thought to mention that tonight, but that is. Superintendent expectation three point five, um, we we have the strategic plan, budget process, strategic comps. That last piece that we didn't put as a focus, because we expect to just have conversation around it all the time. Professional development is one of the topics generally.
I think the question is, does the board want to mutually agree on a PD topic? Or defer to the superintendent and receive all things, that's, and let's separate that from the travel budget.
Yeah.
But that, that is the question that I'd like to know. Tonight, if people want to.
In my mind, the the development that would be received or sought out would be aligning with. Our district vision and values, and so. And strategic plans, so it would come to us as a part of strategy. In order to move the district forward in achieving. What we've set forward. So.
Yeah, plus I guess there's some proactive action, that would probably be a ready.
Exactly, so I don't, I don't think that this is necessary, but.
Um.
Maybe, maybe it's necessary to say that professional development should align with. The like, the strategic initiatives.
Budget realities of the district.
Yeah, well, I think.
I feel like this is a, this is a. Seven point six is more an evaluation item, not a. This manual item.
Okay.
Um. Okay, you just write it down, okay. Uh, we can skip superintendent. Okay, board member post contact, I did not write this, this is the longest thing I've ever seen.
Yes.
Um. I'm either going to Keven. And you can all read it. Or somebody can volunteer to. It's just a lot. So. We're not gonna solve for them tonight. But it is. A lot of. So.
I think Jenna volunteered to do this over.
Well, she didn't.
She did.
Uh, she, she.
Hey, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can't hear you.
I can't hear her.
She says yes.
Yes.
Yes, I am talking, no.
There she is.
She said no.
Um, look, don't get me wrong, I mean, I've read it a couple times, I I'm fine with it, it's just a lot of words.
Well, that's, that's all I'm saying.
If you wanna own a lot of words, own a lot of words. Okay, um.
I will, I will simplify this, I will take it.
I think the, the one thing that I will say is. Um. I I think this was standard practice, but we put in there January was the complex of interest form. You know, everybody had to submit or resubmit. Um. When I think that there was anything that was of significance, I think um. On page twenty, item C, there's still this. Um. DMPS staff, so I think where we ended is that board members are contacted by DMPS staff without permission from the superintendent. Board members should courageously choose the chain of command in any applicable board policies or administrative procedures. For addressing complaints or concerns. Um, and then. The provide the employee the information on how to report confidentially to the ethics point hotline, if that actually happens. Or, and C. Uh. Notify the superintendent about the complaint or concern. We all agree that that felt. Trying to handle it that way, elevate it to the superintendent.
Yes.
Yeah. Um. I think we need to stop. Um.
Let's do this, we can still.
Really?
Uh, so actually, if you look at page twenty-four. Under board meetings and meeting prep, these two things tie. Uh, so actually, if you look at page twenty four, under board meetings and meeting prep, these two things highlighted. Once we agree on what this is, these are management limitations, they will just be reflected on something that would show up. In a board meeting, which is why they're there.
We only received, uh, but there was two seventy nine, I'm sorry.
But I think it's a win for transparency that. I, oh, okay, team, we gotta talk about this. Either none of you were visiting schools, or you were visiting, not like that.
I am not. Still been invited.
So, okay, so we have. A professional courtesy.
Copying them on a note, so you just say, I would like to go visit, and then when you get a note back that says yes. I don't send them to you too, but.
Well, you're supposed to. Yeah, so um, do, how do we feel about? I, what did Jenna say?
Jenna has a question.
Here as well, that was our pri, our prior policy.
Um, if we had, what, email the chair?
We were supposed to email the chair if we were doing a school visit as well. I thought it was just the superintendent.
You had the superintendent or?
Yeah, I mean, that's great, because they.
I always, I always did it.
Dennis said she always does.
Dennis said she always does it.
Yeah, I went, like, I went to Roosevelt the other day and I copied Dr. Roberts.
So what is the appropriate thing? Okay, perfect.
And board chair?
Um, I, I don't care. I mean, I don't, I don't know that I need to know.
That's just a lot of extra.
Yeah, so notifying, but can we, can we agree that maybe working for Tanya is not? Because we're also supposed to have time to set it up.
It's really.
It's just space. So like, wait, wait, I think, I.
That's awesome.
So like, give up your principal or somebody, email those and say, hey, can you come in to, to, you know, graduation. For a middle school, just say, okay, yeah, let me, and then just say. So what about for like?
A panel. Just, I think what we should say is, if you're gonna be in a school.
I think the policy was written, if you were going to do a visit of a school, like if we were instigating it, we were supposed to.
Different.
Yes.
Ask questions and like do a tour, you are supposed to let the superintendent know, like you are going in. Which I think makes sense, because that would put all the staff on edge.
Okay, so I'm gonna summarize and say, if you want to visit a school, you have to go to Dr. Roberts. And work with Tanya, because then they can find a mutually agreeable time. That is different than if you were just going because you were invited or you've got something. I would say that maybe what we should say is professional courtesy is. Whenever possible, if you're gonna be in a building for non-child, non-sports, non-music related things. Let the, let the superintendent know, right? If you're participating on a camp or.
Do your best to let.
Do your best. Superintendent.
It's a superintendent.
Just so he doesn't run into a principal and go, oh, we had Maria here the other day, you know, so you did.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, all right, anything, and everybody will have time to, to read this again one more time. But I, I am a. What I, okay, so let's just talk about the schedule. So it is September sixteen, so. The next step is that uh, Kim and I. Are going to take one more pass of this. I'm gonna do a little I A S B research. And see if there's some of these issues that have been updated, and get some best practices. And then at the next board meeting, ideally, we'll kind of do our, attempt to do a final, a final reading of source. And have Josie and you're in here, so we can, we settle some of those outstanding questions about policy and cascading. And then. With the goal of getting this to be approved at some point in time. Questions, concerns? Okay, all right, team, thank you, Jenna, thank you.